Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this meeting of the Temple City Council for January 21st about 5:00 after 5:00 p.m. And please rise as Mayor Pro Tem Judy Morales leads us in the invocation, followed by our pledge, which will be led by City Secretary Janet Llewellyn.
Let me see. If you've offered us a gift of new life. Thank you for your public. It never fails. Is that unity may prevail. Together. Yes, that you continue. Those affected by COVID. Our experiences. Work out solutions together. Listening to make our. Will you bless our leaders with wisdom and insight? There is. Will we pray for unity? That revival again. Bridge right now. Would raise up innovative businesses. For tea and hope where there is poverty. Down over our nation. Neighborhoods and all. Bless our hearts with your love. See all this in your precious.
I believe in the United States of America. To the Republic. My nation, their God, universal, with thirty eight.
Thank you both very much. Now we'll move on to the public comments section of our meeting. Citizens who desire to address the council may do so as long as you've signed up prior to this meeting. I have three folks that have signed up, so if you would, when I call your name, if you'll please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Ms. Thompson, you're up.
I'm Ms. Thompson. That Henderson Street fellow.
Hello.
I want to know, could there be a sign that say 20 miles an hour flashing light in front of Whitley School in East Temple? To protect the students there, their parents, as well as the teacher. I see 10 buses there, and I was wondering why there's no light to protect the people, the citizens or whoever is coming in there, because they drive through there just like it's a regular drive zone. They don't have no caution sign or nothing. So please help us in East Temple. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next is Ms. Zell Grant. Would you like to speak now or would you like to wait until your item comes up? Very good. Brittany, is it Chapon, Chapain? You're good, you're okay? Okay, thank you. All right, now we'll move on to the third item on the agenda, which is our special recognitions. I'd like to welcome Judge Person up to the podium, along with Chief Reynolds and spouse. Those of you that may not know, this is Chief Reynolds and Judge Person will administer the oath of office to him tonight.
And the chief brought today Bible that was given to us station. Is your right hand?
I.
Thank you. I Sean M. Reynolds.
I Sean M. Reynolds.
I only swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the Office of Chief of Police. City of Temple. Will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect.
Rest of the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
Constitution and the laws of the.
State of Texas. So help me God. Congratulations.
I didn't know this was an open mic night. It's an honor to be afforded the opportunity to continue to wear the uniform and to serve the residents of Temple. I look forward to many years here helping to restore and build relationships where they need repaired, to continue to do better work if we need to, and to build relationships across this entire community. We have recently gone through kind of a re-imagination process within the Temple Police Department. We spent a lot of time re-imagining what our mission is, remarketing, retooling what our patch is. And while I'm not ready to fully reveal all those things, the mission statement really pays homage to the best part of the histories and traditions of law enforcement, the protecting, the serving, the working. It also has includes comments about in partnership with the community. It talks about the essential goals and duties and responsibilities of police officers, which are to prevent, reduce, and solve crime. Then it talks about how we're going to do that with integrity, honor, and dedication. There's a ton of good going on in this community. I'm excited to be here. I certainly appreciate the trust, the favor of the mayor, the city council, the city manager's office. I'm grateful. I look forward to working for you and with you. And if there's anything I can ever do, you can just email me or call me, and we'll sit down and we'll work through it. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Chief, and congratulations.
Mayor, if I may, just some people may be wondering why, after a little over six months, we're swearing in Chief Reynolds today. And that's because a chief coming from outside of the state of Texas had to get through the T. Cole process with the state. That is really a long process, and he did that while it took him six months, he did it very quickly. So he really, he did a lot of work in a very short amount of time. And once he cleared that last hurdle, he can wear the uniform and get sworn in. So that's, I just wanted to explain a little bit about what the gap was there. But he's done a great job, and we look forward to future with him.
If I can just say something, many times whenever Chief speaks to a crowd, he gets choked up just like that. And like you guys witnessed, and to me, you know, all the years that he's been doing this, he still has the passion and the fervor for what he does, which is to serve and protect. And that makes me, and I think it makes this council, and it makes executive staff very comfortable and happy with the decision that's been made to bring him onboard. Because what we want is that whenever we have, you know, his department that interacts with our citizens on a day-to-day basis, sometimes in stressful situations, we want the heart of a servant there in front of our citizens. So again, Chief, congratulations. Thrilled to have you onboard, and we look forward to the future of the Temple Police Department. You bet. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. It's number four on our on our list. All items under this section, which is called the consent agenda, are considered to be routine by the city council and may be enacted in one motion. If discussion is desired by the council, any item may be removed from this consent agenda at the request of any council member and may be considered separately. Council, we discussed in workshop that we would remove item L from the consent agenda for an opportunity to further discuss with the developer on that. So council in the interim has driven, any thought about removing the other item, or are we satisfied? Okay, very good. Then council, I'll ask for a motion to approve this item, which is items 4A through 4P minus item 4L. You would please note your motion on the platform.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt the consent agenda, item A through P less item L.
Second.
Very good. We have a motion by Councilmember Williams. We have a second by Mayor Pro Tem Judy Morales. You would please cast your vote. Item 4A through 4P minus L passes with the vote of four to zero. Now moving on to 4L, which is to consider a resolution declaring support along with an agreement to local funding fee reductions not to exceed $500 for the multifamily tax credit project called Cypress Creek Temple. Entertain a motion on item 4L.
I make a motion that we table item number L.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Judy Morales. We have a second by Councilmember Walker. Counsel, if you would, please cast your vote. Item 4L passes four to nothing. The next item is irregular agenda. This is the first reading in a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance authorizing a rezoning from general retail to Office Two on five plus or minus acres in the Northwest Hills Commercial Subdivision. Second replat located in Temple, Texas, in Bell County, addressed as 610 Parnell Drive. Mr. Chandler.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Bobby Spradley is the applicant for this, and I believe he is probably participating virtually. If you had any questions. And I'm virtually unable to move it forward. There we go. All right, so just looking at the map, so on the left, you can see this is close to Airport Drive, just to the north of it. This is really adjacent to the Northwest Hills neighborhood, along Parnell, but also John Paul Jones and Salisbury Drive. And so really, this is just an existing apartment complex, 91 units at five acres. And multifamily use ironically is not allowed in the current general retail zoning district. The property is for sale, and so as part of the transaction, it was a request to come into compliance with a zoning district that does allow that use. And after analysis, it appears that the existing structures and development meets all the relevant UDC standards. And so here you can see, this is the Autumn Chase Apartments. They're single story, built, I believe, in the mid 80s. And so this is the adjacent neighborhood Northwest Hills. This is a view from High Conderoga Drive. And just a quick comparison of uses within the existing general retail and the proposed Office Two zoning districts. And really just wanted to highlight, obviously, the multifamily use that is not allowed in GR, but is allowed in O2. And other major differences are that O2 does not allow alcoholic beverage sales or auto-related uses, whereas general retail does. A lot of the other uses are the same. And so looking at the zoning map, you can see general retail along Airport Drive to the south and multifamily two to the north. And for the future land use plan or future development plan, this is identified as quarter or mixed use and certainly is compliant with that category. And the property is located along two neighborhood collectors, Salisbury and John Paul Jones. Bear with me. Well, need some help advancing. Thank you. Twenty-one notices were sent out to property owners within 200 feet. One was returned in agreement and zero in disagreement. Of course, the one in agreement is actually the property owner. Staff recommends approval of the request. And at their December 21st meeting, PNZ recommended, you know, unanimous approval as well. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. And once again, I believe the applicant is in attendance virtually, if you have questions for Mr. Spradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chandler. This item is subject to a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this item may do so. Please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record or raise your hand on the virtual platform. And we'd love to hear your comments. Nothing on the virtual platform? Okay. Very good then. There being none, I will close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any thoughts on this rezoning or any questions for Mr. Chandler? Okay. Very good then. If there's no further discussion, then I will entertain a motion on item number five.
I move to approve item five.
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve by Councilmember Walker and a second by Mayor Pro Tem Morales. Counsel, if you would, please cast your vote. Number five passes four to zero. Moving on to item number six is the first reading in a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance approving the Temple Parks and Recreation Department's Youth Program Standards of Care and approving the 2020 annual report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. See you guys. Happy New Year. It's my first visit this year. Tonight, we're bringing before you the standards of care. It's an annual process where we have to approve the standards that we run our after-school program and our summer camp program by. I remember coming last year and doing that. Last year, we had recommendation for change. This year, we do not. But I still would like to make sure that I cover everything for those in attendance online and in person. Because we are not a daycare agency or an in-home daycare, we have to have standards by state regulations on how we are going to care for children when they're in our care for extended periods of time. Texas Department of, I thought I was going to. There we go. Clicked it. Texas Department of Family Protective Services regulates those childcare standards, and those state that we do not have to follow those as a municipal entity, but we have to have our own. And that's why you are our governing body for that. Approval process. I'm clicking too fast. Okay. Forward one. There we go. When we've got our ordinance, we have our ratios not to exceed. We typically are one to 20, but with our after-school program in the Belt and ISD schools, they actually ask us to be one to 15. So generally, actually, all of our programs are at a one to 15 ratio. Our not to exceed ratio is not to go over 20 children per staff member on site. We have some minimum staff qualifications in the standards as well, the health and safety standards. And because of COVID protocols, those are not in there because we still kind of feel that those are temporary, but those are things that add to it. We did run summer camp last year in a different format, and we'll cover that in a little bit. But our age range is five to 13. And then we also have timelines in there for our monitoring and enforcing those standards of it. All of our staff go through background checks because they were working directly with the children. Our staff gets first aid and CPR certified. They also are provided a minimum training manual. And then on a regular basis, they're also given in-service training, similar to our lifeguards do weekly trainings. These guys are doing monthly. They're spread out when it's the zone program and the summer camp. They do a lot of pre-training prior to the summer, and then throughout, they have regular meetings as well. Now, one of the things we want to do is we also give the parents information that states we are not a licensed daycare facility. We are not licensed through the state of Texas. All parents are also given a copy of those standards, the standards of care. And we provide them, last year, we've gone to more of an electronic version of it, but we can also provide them a hard copy when they do it. And they sign off that they've received that, so they understand what we're following. We offer our after-school program actually at 10 sites, really nine right now because Temple Charter Academy has actually paused. They had low enrollment before the school year started. So from a staffing standpoint, they agreed to pause, but we hope to continue that next year and the next school year. But we are at four Temple ISD sites and five Belt and ISD. And then we have multiple camps that take place at our various rec centers as well. And in fact, this week, we're working with BISD to prepare for summer 2021. In our report, we do give the information about what our enrollment was. There's a slight change in how we're presenting this this year to you. Last year, it was an average daily attendance or monthly attendance based on the site. And what we are doing here is giving you the actual unique users that are for that, for each one of those after-school program sites. You can see from the numbers in 2021 school year, our numbers are down. That is really attributed to two things, but both are a result of the COVID-19 factor. And staffing is down because it's hard to attract folks that want to work daily with children and potentially get exposed. So we try to do that. But then because of that staffing, we've capped our Belt and ISD sites at 30 children to make sure that we have appropriate ratios. So we say we're going to follow the standards of care. We do that, but we don't want to exceed the number unless we have the staff. So as we can bring on more staff, we will exceed that. We will expand that.
Mike, do you have the demand at those?
We do.
If we had to staff, there would be more kids involved?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. And in fact, some of them have as many as 10 on a waitlist, some of them have zero, some of them three or four. And we would staff the ones that have the largest demand first. Last, these are the summer camps, and in the past, we would tell you what our weekly average enrollment was, but what we wanted to do was really because of COVID last year, we went back to a unique number of folks. So you kind of understood how many families or individual children we actually served. So by comparison, in the 2019, 2020 year of camps, which kind of covers a little bit of that school year, which was non-COVID time, and then last summer's summer camp, we served 584 kids, different individual children. In the 2020, 21, at this point, we only had a few of our camps. And by comparison, you can see that the numbers are down, certainly due to the pandemic issue, but also from a staffing standpoint. Camps are still very safe, and I'm going to knock on this, I believe it is wood underneath that laminate. Not a single child in any of our care last summer or to date has contracted, got the virus while under our care. Now, it has affected staffing outside of, and all the exposures they may have had. And we have had families say, hey, we may have been exposed. Johnny's not coming today or this week because we want to do it. But nobody has exposed any of our children, and that is because of the communication level that we've had with the parents. And they have done a great job and really been happy about that, and our staff and their communication with us as well. Now, it's affected us from that and trying to expand, but we've been really pleased as best as we can in that situation. Last summer, we did not honor any, we did not have any requests for full scholarships, but what we did do was tuition assistance. So rather than have a family pay for the entire summer upfront, we would have them pay on a weekly basis, a couple of weeks ahead, to make sure that their space was secure and they had care all summer long. And that's another reason why we gave you the unique numbers of how many people we served because some folks will want eight of the 10 weeks that we have of camp, but not the other two. So we want to let somebody else in that we can on those weeks that there's empty space. And that actually allows us to serve more folks. The tuition assistance and basically payment plans is what we've helped with. So tonight, just coming before you, if you have any questions, we would, I'm happy to take those on. We are not recommending any changes to our standards of care. And so therefore, there's nothing really to change, but I just wanted to give you that update on numbers. So if there's anything else, I'll happy to entertain your questions.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This item is subject to a public hearing. You wish to speak on this item, please do so. Raise your hand on the platform. Nothing? Okay. Thank you for the efforts of the Parks Department. I know y'all's hearts are, you know, solidly in the kids' corners, and it's nice to see. Do a good job. I know the parents are appreciative. Okay, then at this time, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, any discussion or questions? Okay. All right, very good. Then I'll entertain a motion on item number six.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve item number six, the Parks and Recreation Youth Program Standards of Care and the 2020 annual report.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilmember Williams, and we have a second by Councilmember Walker. Counsel, if you would, please cast your vote. Item number six passes four to zero. Moving on to item number seven, it's a resolution to consider adopting, I'm sorry, to consider adopting a resolution accepting your request by Bell County, Texas, to voluntarily annex 23.917 acres of the existing Old State Highway of Texas, Highway 95 right-of-way pursuant to Texas Local Government Code, Section 43.1055, directing staff to develop a municipal services plan and calling for a public hearing to consider the annexation. To mayor.
As you're aware, Local Government Code Chapter 43 governs the annexation process. And under Section 43.0155, a municipality may annex a road or right-of-way on the request of the governing body of the political subdivision that maintains the road or right-of-way. This requires counsel to direct the planning department to prepare a municipal services plan for the extension of full municipal services to that area to be annexed. And it also requires two public hearings to be held before an ordinance considering the annexation is presented to council. On August 25th of 2020, Bell County Judge and Commissioners Court submitted a request for the city to annex approximately 23.917 acres of the existing Old State of Texas Highway 95, or Old Highway 95, as it's commonly called. This portion of Old Highway 95 is approximately three miles and begins at the Temple City limits near Barnhart Road and continues south for approximately three miles. And for the annexation request tonight, counsel is asked to adopt a resolution to either accept or reject the request. If accepted, to direct staff to develop a municipal services plan and to call the required public hearings. And this is a map of the requested annexation. As you can, like I said, it's about twenty-three acres. It starts at around Barnhart Road, which is the black line where City Limits is the red dotted line. And it is only the existing right-of-way and road. There's no private property or expansion of the right-of-way. So it is only the road and right-of-way. No, no property owners adjacent to it would be coming in. It is strictly the road. It's not being expanded. And then it would travel down about three miles, which is about two miles north of Little River. And then for right now, the calendar to complete the annexation would be if y'all approve the resolution tonight, the city secretary will publish notice for the public hearings. And then the scheduled dates for the public hearings would be February eighteenth at the regular council meeting and the municipal services plan would be presented. And then a special council meeting on the nineteenth for the second public hearing. And then at the March council meeting would be the first reading in consideration for the annexation, followed by a second reading on April first. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
This item is subject to a public hearing? Not a public hearing? No, I'm sorry, it's not. Counsel, then are there any questions regarding this annexation? We've seen a couple of these, like this. Nothing? Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That was, that was easy, wasn't it?
It was easy, this thing.
All right. Then I will entertain a motion on item number seven.
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead, Jessica.
I'll make a motion to approve item seven.
Second.
Have a motion by council member Walker and a second by council member Williams. Counsel, if you would, please cast your vote. Item number seven passes four to zero. Thank you all for attending this quick meeting tonight and we are adjourned.